Thank you, Seth.
You got it. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, and this is the Select Board Meeting. I'd like to make a motion to bring the meeting to order and accept page seven, seventy-five, Erin Huntley, all in favor? I, before I move forward, I'm just going to read our statement from DEI, which is the following. The Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants between marginalized and minoritized communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. So with that, are there any walk-ins here this evening? Would be anybody would like to address anything that is not on page seven? I don't see any, so we will move to the report of the department here.
Evening. Thank you. First of all, thank everybody who came to town meeting last night. Nice to have time to contact all the private heads. Todd Boys and all the volunteers whose work make the town go, so nice to have that behind us, but now we have another town meeting in about three weeks, which will be the Cushing Hadley School Project Town Meeting. That'll be Monday, the 29th at 7:00 PM, also at the main school. Next couple of days, we ask people to be aware of high tide. We are still seeing astronomically high tides. They'll continue through Friday. We're also looking for up to another inch of rain on Friday, so you might see some localized floods. Keep feeling careful driving our town. The town's conducting concrete testing at Sea Point Seawall that worked again today and will continue for two to three weeks. Testing's taking place on Turner Road and Lighthouse Road, southeast of the section of Jericho. If you have questions, contact Sean McCaffrey in the Engineering Department, (545) 8782, extension five. The water department will be flushing into Walnut Tree Hill neighborhood starting tomorrow in the tents, starting Woodward Road. This routine maintenance may cause temporary changes including groundwater in both the area of flushing and being on. Keep an eye out for disintegration and double check before bathing and doing laundry. If you have questions, you can call the water department, (545) 8785, five. As Laura mentioned last night, the town meeting, the contractor for the lighthouse, which is going to be back on site April 22nd, including remaining work on the lighthouse. The board may recall we have shut that project down due to the cold weather. We couldn't do the ground work. With the weather getting warmer, staying about forty, we'll be back out there. Major work to be done is the grounding, metal handrails outside, lighting room, some glasswork, and painting. I won't show that. Should take two to three weeks once they get back out and started. Shipshape 2024 will be on Star Wars Day, Saturday, May 4th. Flights will be picked up at the Town Hall from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They end up to be done on Saturday and on Sunday, and residents can leave the special shipshape bags by the side of the road. They'll be picked up by the DVW. Shipship Day is sponsored by the분화기사 committee in town of Situate. We thank everybody who participates. It's a great event. It goes a long way in helping keep our town clean. Town Treasurer wants to remind residents that quarterly payments for real estate and personal property taxes are due on Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. You can pay your taxes in person at the treasurer's office here at Town Hall, through the town website, under online services, on the town's homepage, and select the pay bills online. If you have questions, you can contact the treasurer's office or go to their webpage and select important tax information. The Board of Health is hosting a mosquito and tick presentation on Monday, April 1st, from 3:30 to 5:00, in the Situate Library, the Community Room. Presentation is a collaboration with the town mosquito control. They'll provide health tips on keeping your and your family safe from exposure to mosquitoes and ticks. Right after that, you grab a quick bite and right down the town meeting singles will be second. The Health Department is also hosting the Dana Farrow Remembrance Event on Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. Women ages forty and older interested in scheduling an appointment can reach out to the Remembrance Event Office at (617) 632-1974. That will take place across the street and the parking lot, six weeks. Police Department will be hosting a blood drive at the Craft Family Blood Donor Center to remember and honor all those fighting cancer. Drive will take place on Sunday, April 28th, 2024, from 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM at the Public Safety Complex near the Chief Justice Cushion Highway. Appointments are recommended. The walk-ins will be taken as time allows. Photo ID is required. Spend a thank you donation when receiving the Craft Family Blood Donor. Blood center $10 target gift card for information, (617) 632-3206. I know there's a lot of numbers here. We can post this update on the website if people will be able to get it. As moderator pointed out last night, we have the More Kind Lincoln survey is online. It's available. We asked you to take a few minutes to go fill that out. Let us know what you think about the future use of the More Kind Lincoln property. Available on the town website, on Facebook. The title for the Planet Slow Roll is on Saturday, April 20th, 2024. That is this Saturday. Being sponsored by the Recreation Department and the State Bike Committee. Online registration is required before the event. Cost is $5 per participant. Signers will start at 10:30 and the event will kick off at 11:00 AM. Please contact the Recreation Department for more information. Just a reminder, we did talk about the upcoming town meeting for the Cushing Hadley Project. We do have a link on our website on the homepage and we'll give you all the information you need, so please click on that, situateMA.gov. Click on the red banner and get yourself informed. We'll be back at April 29th. And finally, the food pantry's most wanted items, peanut mushroom soup, low sugar cereal, Cheerios, Chex, Rice Krispies, boxed oatmeal, cranberry juice, canned white beans, baked bean, juice boxes, yellow pudding cups, canned mixed fruit, and bread mix. They can be dropped off at the pantry during normal operating hours and on the bins behind, the library, Shaws, and all the village.
Thank you. Here I go on. I just want to take an opportunity to thank Jim, Nancy, Rain, Cheryl, Jen, Kathy, first staff, everyone from last night, going very smoothly. While attendance was less than desirable, probably one of the worst attendants that I've seen in my career here. I'm going to, I'm going to take the positive and think that it's because it's, our team is very well prepared and puts out a great information and very justified articles and issues that folks trust us. So I'm hoping that's why, but if it's not, then I really encourage citizens to continue to show up to town. Because it's the only form of democracy, really, the purest form we have here, and it's your opportunity to voice your opinion and to really hear all sides of the issues. So I'm sure April 29th would be a little bit better attended than last night. I hope so. It's a big issue. It's a big ticket item. But really, thank you to all the staff and everybody on the board that puts in so much time, advisory to everyone to prepare for a town meeting. So at least we get to move all our initiatives forward, which is a good thing for Situate, which is great. So just want to thank you all for everything that you did. And before I pass over to you guys for questions, so Jim, a couple announcements that we did hear last night that I don't know if we have said publicly. Congressman Keating was there. He did tell us that we will be giving recipients of $970,000, right? Did I get that number right?
Yes.
Grant for our water treatment plant, which we were very grateful for. So thank him and everybody's office and Chip for applying for it and everyone that worked on that. And then secondly, June Campbell gave me the permission to announce publicly that we are also giving the recipient of $5.5 million grant for our seawalls from Senator Markey's office. So they will be scheduling time to come the next couple of weeks in person to present the awarding of that grant to the town. And so we look forward to welcoming them and accepting them behalf of all citizens. So that's great. So thank you for submitting for those grants to the team and congratulations for winning them. So all good stuff. Does anybody have any questions for Jim?
I have a question. The lighthouse, did you say two to three weeks and it'll be complete? Does that mean those scaffolds are being down in two to three weeks?
Yeah, they should be done two to three weeks.
Thank you. Is that, yes, two hundred weeks from when?
They stop.
When we start.
April 22nd, April 22nd.
April 26th. We're starting.
So whether to.
Whether to. Okay. I will just let people know we're trying to put together some sort of a celebration when we do have the lighthouse back in our possession and we're able to turn the light on. So this has been a moving target for everyone who's asking. And so I will tell you, I have meeting coming up with the Historic Society. We're going to try to assign people jobs to do so that we can pull this all together. And the more time we have, the better it is for planning purposes. So that's all I'll say. So we look forward to it.
It's more like mid-May, mid to late May.
Yes, but to be on the same side.
Well, I'm giving a range.
Yeah, yeah, but the committee needs a date.
Yeah, yeah.
But we don't want to push and not be able to make the date. So anyway, thank you. One other thing. I go by Go Green almost every day and like, look, it's getting worse down there. So my question for you, Jim, is is someone monitoring the height and the?
Biohazard, one percent.
All right, because it's getting pretty.
We have, we meet with Karen Joseph and the development team and all the public safety once a month, and that's the same question every month with the biohazard placement complaints. We don't do a pretty good job monitoring, so people will check on that all the time.
It just came tonight. It sort of all of a sudden appeared to me to be considerably bigger, and I suppose with people, I'm a year one, they start demolishing stuff, whatever they do, stuff that.
They're probably getting a lot of material from people cleaning up their ass. Their desk gets a little big. They start processing it, and then later in the spring, it will start going on. So it starts selling this bomb stuff. This time of year, it's normal, but again, I know we definitely back it out. We check on it on a regular basis.
Quick question is, how much longer will the North Situate relief nourishment program love have lots?
Well, I'll check with Cory.
Wasn't it like six weeks originally?
Six to eight weeks. So it'll probably last a couple of days because of the storm and then moving, but I'll have to check with Cory.
So roughly that, yeah.
Probably.
And I was asking this question to the last people's question. Because the weather's turning, people are desperate to know if the port of bodies will be returned to North Situate and maybe somewhere else, anywhere else.
Usually go in May, like before, four of May, we start putting those out. So we have reduced those a lot.
What?
We have reduced the number of port flights, but you know what we should have on this?
I will know in a moment.
That's the beaches as well, too.
Sorry?
Is that beaches as well that come all the time on or?
Beaches usually more up there.
Yeah. Burning questions. You ready?
Okay.
Each of each road, I had a question. Asking how it is, signs says there's going to be leaving, but then there's all the sand piled up. Just kind of like, what is going on down there? Right at that second entrance, sand's all over the place.
Yeah, they were replacing the saw line. When we get to the saw line, they had to replace the water line. I'll check and see if those are done. Once they're done, we'll have to clean everything up in the road. We have a picture through our luck that was part of the high-end project, and that looked like a water frost was turned on the saw line. It was leaking so badly. So they had to move the water line, they had the saw line. I think the water line's done. I'll have to check with Kevin, the saw line official, if he has to clean it. No, it's all done. Obviously, there wasn't that big time. This is state of the game.
Yeah, I was curious, because it looked like a lot of action.
Yeah, the storm last week, I think, was a lot worse than the people thought we were doing tomorrow. Today, down at the V at Fourth Cliff, there was twenty-three and four feet of debris that had been in the road. So I talked to a resident, Todd, we said it was bad as you see, that hasn't happened in a while. So we have a lot of cleaning up to do on our town, so we'll take it along.
Anything else?
Just on the appropriation from Senator Markey, both of those are direct or progressive appropriations opposed to grants.
Oh, sorry.
According to Jimmy Carewell, the $5.5 is the largest one in Commonwealth this year. So.
Excellent. That's good. Thank you. Thanks for that appreciation. All right, nothing else further. We will move on to.
The Friday before tomorrow day is when the water plays.
Thank you for that. Love to. Okay, hopefully everybody heard that. Friday, April 29th. All right, so we're going to move on to a little bit of a celebration here. It's Kathy Gardner. Come on up. Come on down.
Come on down.
So Kathy, as everyone knows, is our town clerk, but she started with our public schools in 1999, is that correct?
Yes.
So that was her first degree into public service.
Yes.
So, and then moved on over into the town clerk's office as the assistant and quickly moved into our elected position as our town clerk. And since 2012, we've been there.
As a town.
Yeah. As the clerk. And I have to say, Kathy, you're one of the hardest working people I've ever witnessed when I drive early to the gym or whatever. If it's a Saturday and it's Friday morning, you are here. You're here early, you're here late. Your dedication, your passion to your role is just so admirable. And, you know, we all benefit from it every election day when we get timely results and accurate results and all the other licensed things that you take care of. It's just not that not everybody has. Which we tried to convey to folks last night. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We're so happy to have you with town. You have a great asset.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's that 25 years, man, things like it just leave by. It goes by fast, and I appreciate all the support that I get from all departments here, Town Hall, DVW, the schools. I mean, it is truly a, it takes a village for a sport of that, it does. You can't do it by yourself. You have the backup. And over the years, I've been blessed to have all the support that I have. You know, the DVW guys, they're just so good. They're my muscle. They're my tomfool. But, you know, you can't do it by yourself. You have to have a team. I have your support. It's all the great guys who raised me and my staff. And we see the needs that we have, the questions or problems, and it gets addressed. So I'm fortunate to work in such a wonderful town and one community. I've been blessed, been able to survive an epidemic. And town meetings in the football field and, you know, screams up to my election workers, how are we going to fill this off? That was a challenge. You know, it's funny, Ruth Thompson, the reporter for the Mariner, always told me, since I took off, and got elected, she went, oh my gosh. Everything that happened to town, like it's happened to double elections, recounts, pandemics, you know? And if it doesn't, you're just, you know, and you find a way around it and you have a nervous breakdown in the meantime. It's just totally me. I can't play poker because I wear everything in my sleeve, so. But anyhow, I appreciate the recognition, and I thank the towns for your support. Thank you.
I'm sure I'll send some things that I'd like to say. There was a petition after last night's, and we had already made it a 15-year term this year. Nice try. Yeah, the, all of you things that you've accomplished, all of the trials and tribulations, and you've done it with grit and smile and heart. And, you know, I have people that come to me and say, oh, I had to come up into the town clerk for X. And like, they're so helpful. So, you know, it's been amazing. It's been fantastic work. Don't go anywhere for a while.
Thank you.
I'll stick around.
Depends on the medium team.
Well, I want to personally thank you throughout my time in town as an adult. I've had to commit to the town for socks many nights. And you've always been so gracious and thoughtful. Yes, you know, so I personally appreciate it. And I would also, I don't want to break national politics into this, but this has been probably the worst time to be an election official that this country has ever seen. And we in Situate are very fortunate that your attitude has been so even-keeled and that I believe that people of Situate truly trust you. And I don't think there's ever been any cause to question how you've done your job, how your office does its job, and how elections are run here at town meeting. It's a big job. So I just want to say personally, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
And I wish, I hope you know.
Yeah, two more years.
That's it. I missed that. The lottery comes. We all have our time. Yeah, right?
Kind of thinking back on what you said, has anyone, there's a lot of things we could be concerned about in town, and you worry about things. At any moment, has anyone ever been concerned? Is it a setting of mental? That election's not going to go well.
I've been worried about a permanent.
No, right, no worries.
You should be.
But that's the beauty of what you've done, the beauty of the public base of doing it. You just know you nailed it. Everyone's going to talk, and it's just fabulous. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree. Absolutely. I love working with you. I think I've said that before.
Thank you.
And I know there's been places where you're waiting for the full slow. It's amazing how like flawless it's election. And that, that you do such a great job. You're smart, organized, dedicated, and just amazing, flawless, sort of. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate this. I do. And who knew that a high school graduate with no business sense at all, I asked for this, the former town clerk, why the heck would you hire me? I have no computer skills. I can type a letter, go online and shop. That's it. And she said to me, and I quote, she said, because you worked in the restaurant business for thirty-plus years, and you can multitask, and you've done functions. And I said, what functions have to do with being in the town clerk? Oh, she goes, this is my name. This is right after I got hired. She goes, well, we run elections and we set up town meeting. I said, we do what? She was, oh yeah, this isn't a nine-to-five job where I don't have to work, right? She was, no, we don't have to work like one elec-, and I'm like, oh, okay.
And then you were hooked.
I was truly writing, but I have to say to the public, you know, there was a lot in 2020 during the presidential race there. I have to remain neutral and unbiased, of course, and so is my staff. And I had to talk people out of watching social media and dealing with all the rhetoric, because it does put a lot of stress on the election staff in the courts. We had many people say that they should send our staff to Michigan and Georgia for the next one, but, and they were very sweet. We got a lot of letters from states. So that's the nice thing. It's not without stress. It's not without worry. I'm worried about the public's impression of things. But, you know, we are kind of, we have ballot testing, machine testing. There's a whole process to the election. It's not just that. So there's a lot of backup that we have to answer questions. My office welcomes the questions. I don't want you going on social media saying, what did you know that they do? We don't do it that way. Come to us, we'll give you the right answers. And if I don't know them, I will find out who we're going to go for the answers. So if nothing else, I just try to do the right thing all the time and instill that in my staff.
Well, that's very evident, and we have a little something for you.
Oh, hi.
Yeah, it's a puppy in a box. Puppy in a box.
There's a rotten tick on there, right?
Yeah. It's a toaster.
I'm going to town. Did you see there? I put a piece of peanut butter on the toaster oven, and I went in the building to tell them to have nice weekend, and the buzzer went off, and I went, oh.
And the whole place smoked.
Dumped for three days.
Right before peanut butter on it?
No, just toasted peanut butter this time.
Oh, I see. So that's clear. Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura.
Yes.
We also have her name described on the.
Oh, that's right.
For 45 years.
Get on a 45-year employee. You're a former clerk.
All your names on the.
This is my fly in the wall.
All right. No, you know, we got to bring the dog.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Very much. Go enjoy it.
Thank you.
All right. See you on the 29th. Yes. Thank you for that. Three more years. All right. May 18th. I'm going to hold time.
I think I'm.
Yeah.
This is about your.
All right. Oh, it's two meetings in a row.
Two meetings in a row.
Puppy love.
Two, two meetings in a row.
We need to come up here with us.
Well, I can bring them up.
So Chief, you are here to present a donation.
We are. We are. Appreciate it. Yeah, we have, we received a $1,000 donation from a member of the community. Who's been a great supporter of the department over the years, and that's really, like I said, as a member of the community, is here, wish to stay anonymous. We're respecting that, but loves animals, loves the services we're doing, particularly with this where there's such a great time that people stop and vet itself. We found out that we were doing the dog. We're actually doing that, so we have a canine fund that allows us to help support things with, with Blue. So this, this donation can be used towards, you know, care, feeding, vet bills, things like that as they come into the society.
Hey, well, it's strictly for Blue.
It's going to be for, that'll be part of it.
It's about two vet pens.
So, yeah, we're super, we're super fortunate to have this. We did get a lot of grant money, too, that's helping to support us, too. So he's, Blue is definitely got a lot, a lot of support and a lot of financial support this corner, so it's, it's great. But he is obviously earned the attention.
Oh, my God, it's just like the best.
He's growing quickly. I think it was a little year over here, and probably from last night, he's been on a couple of times. So we're really appreciative of the support from the community with this, and he's been a great addition so far. And also Billings, I think, is.
He's exhausted. He's tired bad. He's tired.
I tell him he's very popular, but he knows he gets sick on the dog, so.
Look at the ass.
So we appreciate you giving us the time to come in here.
He's not. We'll see if he smells something over there. He's going to give you a kiss. My dog still chews on his key ring.
On his key ring.
Then he's two and a half. He's not all the time. It's his favorite. It's a good one. All right, well, we are very grateful to our anonymous donator. We appreciate that. It's, you know, donations like that, that really take the burn off of some of this little sting in new projects like our little. So if there isn't any other commentary, we're discussing. I'll make a motion. Move to accept a donation of $1,000 to the City Police Canine Income to benefit future initiatives for the Situate police community resource. Motion by Karen Huntley, second by Karen Carewell, all in favor? Aye. We could drag her on for a long time. We'd talk, we'd talk.
Think we can come back next week.
Think of a reason to come next week.
Absolutely. Time meeting on the 29th, I think, if you have a, on this calendar.
Good job.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You might just stand.
You want to stay here, too? You can hang out with us.
All right, stay here. I'll go back in the morning and catch you.
Yeah, hope to make sure you're new. I didn't get to talk to you. It's cool. Capital. He's forced it.
Yeah.
All right, next on our agenda is our annual proclamation for Arbor Day, who is, as I just said, annually, with respect to all the trees in our town. And Albert Clark, student parson, will read the proclamation.
Okay, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Lorman proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world, and whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, hot heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, food for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are the source of joy and spiritual renewal. And the town of Situate has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board for the town of Situate, who thereby proclaim April 26th to 24th Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate. and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge that all citizens plant trees to let in the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed, this ninth day of April, two thousand and twenty-four. By the Citrus Board.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Are we planting any new trees to be?
One. There was last year, Karen Joseph got a bunch of his conditions and some of his. And they're all planted last year. This year, I think we have to plant these. And I have to check for that.
We don't want that. Okay. Any, any other comments about Arbor Day? Answer me.
Work to plant some trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright.
Trying to give you something.
Thanks. There we go, of course. Okay, the next um, discussion um, and item on our agenda has been postponed. So we will be moving down to um, following one, which is to review uh, contracts with Kevin specifically uh, for the purpose of water meters with integrated radios.
So, thank you. As you know, for the past ten years, we've been working on our meter replacement plan. Um, actually, we wanted to do that. Um, we went up to bid for the next round of meter replacement and uh, I sell suspended contract that it gets the bid every, every three years. Um, last year, there was another contractor, I think they're from upstate New York that came in, but they're uh, very protective type of meters we get. So this is what we have. The only changes I would ask um, is the, we award the contract per unit price. We gave the estimate of what we had in the bid price and it was tallied up. So we'd just like to be able to, it doesn't mean, we don't want to do it as a long time contract because that's what we used last year. So there may be instances where we may be more three eight meters, five eight meters, two hundred meters on the unit price. The price is two hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. So I believe we have an allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, you have, you, you see your capital plan, annual allocation.
We have a capital plan and that, you know, and annual calculator, you know.
We don't.
You know what I'm saying. So what we want to do is if we have the opportunity to replace more meters for a certain size, like if you keep going, we don't want to be limited by what was on that.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So um, A, I want to take to install seven hundred meters and B, when those seven hundred installations are completed, what percentage of our town will be meters?
So I had a discussion with Eric prior, actually last night, we talked a little bit about the meters. He believes if everything goes right and they continue the way they went last year, by the end of this year, we could be pretty close to a hundred percent. So he believes we're in the mid sixties now. But he thinks if we continue going, going the past couple of years, we could hit, we could hit a hundred percent.
You can install. Yep, you can install seven hundred meters in seven months.
His quote, not mine. I mean, it is a lot of work. Um, our meter reader is, is very aggressive in, in changes about. Plus, we've got a really good feeling to do a lot of work with the meters and replacements, as well as leak detection. So I thought he was being very aggressive, but I, that's what he, what he felt. And I would love it if he did, um, but it is, it's a lot of reads.
Yeah, well, and I didn't expect a hundred percent by this year, but it's a great goal.
I, that's his goal. That's what he said. So.
Support him.
I hope he's there.
And just so folks know, this does help with um, data collection as well as usage detecting means. So it is a superior way in which to.
Well, we're not, like Boston Water Store, for example, they've got a live twenty-four hour read. If your toilet's running, they, they know about it. The economics value up. We don't get the reads. It, it makes it easier when they're doing the reading because they don't have to go in the house to read the dial. It's more about, it, it's still a machine that connects it. It's not gonna say it's, you know, you're leaking this much at this time. Not gonna get that type of data. Um, to the future, hopefully we can, but we're not that powerful.
Is that just a software upgrade or?
This, they've got a much more expensive system. A higher, a much higher.
So by that statement, then you, you all just meant by analyzing the data fair, you'll be able to see if they're safe?
We can read the meters a lot quicker and you can get it turned around a lot.
Can't do it again?
No, it wasn't mine. I don't remember what we're gonna be. No, it's great.
When you say read the meters, what are you thinking? You can do monthly billing at one point? If they were all watched on?
That'd be a.
Or.
That would be a big, a big thing to do. Right now, if the meter reader finishes early and does that section of town, he will go back and work with the program. They'll stop doing meter replacements. Just to get it done. But I, at this time, until we get a little further along, I, I would be comfortable saying that.
Um, do you know how long it's gonna be replacing the meter or how disruptive is it to the home?
Well, usually if the window's open, they climb and sell it and they just change it. It's a lot easier that way. No, yeah, no, they'll leave notes and, and they'll contact people if they need to change the meter.
But they have to get into the house?
Yes, they do have to get into the house. Sorry. Town meeting last night, we're all a little punchy, so.
Really? Anyway, okay, thank you. Is it? Alright. No further questions? Any discussion from the audience? I see none.
Second topic.
I see none. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
Or did we have to change this at all or?
I, I would just ask if we could modify it to uh, use the unit prices. Would it be comfortable with everything? And if you're just going unit prices?
What, what are the unit prices?
What are they?
So on page two and three, they're listed on what the unit prices are.
I don't think we have that. We just have the uh, the top line sum of two hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty.
We just have the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Executive action.
Is that, will that cover it or is there something amended?
Um, rather than the motion saying in the amount of, can we just substitute at unit prices?
As, as not.
Not to, not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I wouldn't put it out to the scene.
No?
Cause they're, they're um, the contract has extensions in it.
Okay.
Actually, extensions secondly.
Okay. Alright, what are the unit price? We don't have to read everything.
Yeah, that's the main unit price is, is about sixteen unit prices, maybe from three quarter inch, five eights, one inch, different types of meters.
Do they change? Should we accept that into, I think we should accept the unit pricing.
That's part of the contract.
Okay.
And it's good for three years.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
Similar to the heavy equipment bids?
Okay, sorry. We don't, I don't have that back up. So that's, okay, okay. Are you comfortable with that thing?
Sure. Move that the select board, the contract for providing new water meters with integrated radios to tri sales incorporated, uh, using unit pricing in the contract for a total amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
But they don't want the total.
Skip the, skip the total amount.
Will the unit prices outlined in the contract?
For total, then it's outlined in the contract. So.
Seth, didn't have to give them the word.
Chief said, vote her on that.
She has been raised. Yeah, for the terms of contract.
It's good.
No, it has to have, it must have a pricing, but the total would, would be based on what's actually purchased and, right?
Based on the unit prices.
Yeah.
We can't exceed this appropriation anyways.
Okay.
That's not the one that happened.
Lauren, you want to read back the motion?
It says move that the select board award a contract for providing new water meters with integrated radios to tri sales incorporated. Unit prices outlined in the contract. The motion is a good one, second by?
There are canvals. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Good thing there aren't a lot of big things left tonight's meeting. Everybody's a little tired. Okay, next. We have Nancy to discuss our annual ambulance abatement program. Yes.
So this is pursuant to the board's policy, which is adopted several years ago. Um, back in two thousand fourteen and an amendment two thousand nineteen. Uh, the policy states that anything over twenty-four months would be written off. Um, the board has not gone that far. A board normally leaves sixty months open, so five years of older receivables that can continue to be worked on. Um, what you have before you tonight is two years for write-offs if you want to do that. And that will bring you down to forty-eight months of older receivables. If you want to leave it at sixty, then we would just do the fiscal nineteen and leave the fiscal twenty open. Uh, so that's why it's so high. Uh, I did talk to, I think, like board member Harrison today. And I was looking at because it, it seemed high to me as well, the dollar value. And in the past few years, there's been several years where it's been over eighty thousand dollars. Um, and then there was a year when it was in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in fiscal fifteen and a hundred and seven in fiscal sixty, as we were trying to get the receivable to a more manageable.
I'm just thinking FY twenty, obviously, so. No, Seth, possibly what, you know, spiked it a little bit earlier.
Yeah, nineteen. I, I don't know specifically why. The revenue that we took in for nineteen was more than what we took in for eighteen. We surpassed what our estimate was. The commitment was similar to what eighteen and twenty was as well. I would have expected to see it for twenty. Um, the only thing I can think of is a hole over because of COVID. As, as things started to go downhill, that receivable, people weren't looking to pay older bills. Um, but to your point, I think nineteen and twenty gave us the help of that. Just before the pandemic and at the very beginning of the pandemic and towards the height, insurance companies weren't sure what to pay. No one was really sure what was gonna be paid. People were losing their jobs. So this receivable, I don't think it's going to be materially affected by leaving it open. But it's certainly up to the board to decide what they want to do for this all our number.
And is the partial receivables, you know, based on the anticipation you think of the users, the riders, whatever, to, you know, the copay aspect of it and that doesn't come through?
I, you know, like Medicare, they, right?
Yeah, so they just don't pay the.
They don't have a wrap.
Exactly.
Definitely, yeah.
Well, not just that though, right? Because it's, it's fifty-nine percent, sixty-four percent. So it's.
Right now, we're leaving, uh, the allowed ambulance. Uh, the commitment, so for example, in twenty twenty, the commitment was two point three million. What we were allowed to collect was just over one million because of Medicare, Medicaid. Even if it's two thousand dollar bill, Medicare and Medicaid will dictate how much we can actually do that for that. Um, and then you have people who have some Medagap plans so that they can, they settle the Medicare. And then that will up, pick up maybe a twenty percent of copay. But if they don't have plan or it doesn't get filled or tied, then we're out of luck.
And where? Um, does this write-off hit us?
Well, it'll hit, it'll put us in, the receivable will be reduced. So we'll have less annual revenue with a few here, but we know this is revenue that we're not going to get, to get unless we get much more aggressive during the collection, which is something our board did not want to do.
It's usually hardship.
There are hardships. And the other part of this statement is some newer builds that there have been hardship requests received. And normally we, I achieve, time to destroy myself, and those businesses have sprinting a step forward and to want them together with these.
I just want to note in the past, you know, that, just so folks know, that, that town, the town does very, it is, it's not, she's not aggressive in that she's not passionate, but she is very diligent in trying to uh, collect as much as possible and work with residents. Uh, so this delay of three years reflects the, those efforts. So.
If you can turn it over to the deputy and the deputy guys, need a sound collections. Right?
Yeah, it's just, this is not the life of the time.
But yeah, I mean, it's all, just going through. Yeah, all those numbers, some of those over to seven, I understand. That's exactly.
Are we comfortable with the amount? Um, is there any desire to do anything differently? As, you know, you see, I said, a lesser amount, try to collect a little bit further, um, comfortable with that support us.
This is bringing down to four years outstanding rather than five years outstanding.
But given the pandemic, that it's very appropriate to do that long years now. We can, we can afford that. Well, it's not coming on.
It, it's not.
It's just, we just don't get it.
Right. We, we've already made our revenue projections for ambulance collections for those years.
Well, it just gives a more opportunity and child. Right. No, I, I, I understand. And I also think that, that on the flip side of that is that if you do, just give people more time than, or less time, i- if you stop collecting at a lesser time, that might incentivize people to say, well, I'm just not bothered with it because relevant and bug me three years or two years. So I, I don't know how people think about it, but that's the only thing I can make of.
Well, that's fine. Anyone else very comfortable with the motion?
Yeah, I know some, um, some of the recent, like the, the two thousand twenty-three, like the zero percent collected, do we? So I'm assuming most of us were trying to get it from, sure, that's early.
Or yeah, the, the newer ones.
Yeah, the newer ones, I don't think are involved in the calculation. Are they or are they?
The newer ones are um, either deceased, bankruptcy or hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think we got one in there that um, in, in just.
Yeah, I was thinking if you add those, those are.
Yeah.
Sorry, can I say?
Alright. Uh, any further discussion? Questions from the audience?
Uh, motion?
Move to approve the recommended abadments for all outstanding ambulance charges from FY twenty nineteen and two thousand twenty, total of one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and seven cents. Further move to approve the recommended abadments for forty-six accounts due to death, hardship, uh, Medicare balances unable to locate and unable to balance invoice receipts for a total of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion was moved by Andy Goodrich, uh, second by Karen Canfield. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Steph, the prize employer. Next, you have a packet on our desk.
So much paper.
So it's fine, but we did discover that our policy is that we should review the policies and then vote on them the next meeting. Is that a true statement?
No, that is only for new policies.
New policies, okay.
Not for these policies.
Okay. Um, I would, so, I'm gay. Yes, we may. Um, I would recommend, uh, so, so the, the first two batches that we did were pretty straightforward. Uh, you know, things that were not necessary, we could delete. Uh, as we go forward, there will be more discussion and more con- confrontation necessary. And I would submit some, a lot of revision. So I think that it would be prudent from uh, to err on the side of caution to discuss and then the following meeting, do the votes, um, in case somebody has a idea, you know, they're enjoying or just want to put that. But I think that there's gonna be, and the reason, the primary reason is, although I sat on the board at this time, I'll be curious to see if it's current members with, in twenty nineteen, this left board adopted this procedure. Manual. It's quite, it's quite um, thorough and it's very, and it covers everything this board, how we operate. And because of that, and some of the discussion companies tonight, I, and Lauren and I have kind of dissected, there are a number of policies that will, that relate to our procedures that need to be incorporated into this talk. So, and especially for those, I would like to get the forward thoughts on those. And then incorporate it and then, you know, hopefully before this currently is we can present, we can hear this forward. Or we believe this is going to be the most, this is going to take, clean up a lot of policies that are in this book now. And I would submit be much cleaner to know, okay, so we'll be discussing, how do we do the last chair of what our office does, that sort of thing, in one place. So I just wanted to bring that to attention. We'll, I can give you, or we can send a copy of this to you, but know that it's going to be, it's still going to be edited. So I'd be, it's up to the board if you want to see the.
It was sent out today.
Oh.
To discuss it on our next meeting. And I think there's only two policies that are locked to that.
Okay, well, we'll go through this.
So basically, you're saying we have two select board policy documents?
We have a procedure, policies and procedures.
With that one.
But this one did not go back and look through to see others that might have been appropriate to be glommed into this section. So there are a number of instances where one of them very embarrassed about is that our time of meeting, we have two identical policies. But because the boards turn over, everybody, I think, kind of forgot that we had a whole policy. So this exercise is pretty good, but I will, I will say that, you know, as they go through, oh, I didn't know that. And we're having. Okay, so, um, of the ones we're discussing tonight, the first is, uh, policy two ninety-eight, which is request for information by members. Um, you will see in your backup, sorry, I have to. Um, I'm sorry. Um, sorry, I'm not already here.
Hmm.
We're all back.
Did it fall? Did it bring you the copy, Karen, in your packet?
I know, but I put my notes on.
Oh, the time of year?
No.
No, two ninety-eight.
Uh, so this was interesting, so this is the, uh, what do you do, say the least? And, and we probably all figure out why this is written. So in nineteen ninety-eight, the board, the, that board of, um, decided that there needed to be some guard rule around. Who, who goes, and I suspect it's select board, who goes to the head of a department and says, I'd like you to do this. And, um, that this policy makes clear that the chain of command is through the town administrator when it comes to request for action. Um, and through the chair of the select board, when it comes to boards and committees that we appoint. Um, you'll see in the second page in the handout some discussion points on this. Um, I think that the way it's written originally, uh, needs to be separated up because we don't know that, um, you know. If, I would, I would, I would argue that the actual piece is very appropriate. Like you need to make sure that, you know, people are running around telling people in the building, make sure you're doing this, that, the other thing. Without the town administrator's knowledge, foreblessing. And the same with our boards and committees, I wouldn't go to my committee and say, oh, I think we should just change your charter. I, you know, that kind of thing. The part about information, I would suggest that we pull that separate and just, um, copy. I don't know how we're going to, the language, but basically make sure the chair and the town administrator knows. So it is that, that is, I think, gum up the works, honestly. So if I want to say, cabinet, wouldn't get paid in my road, I can shoot in that email, copy Jim's, you know, as I'm asking. But Jim doesn't really need to be involved. So those are the discussion points. Um, and then, um, the second page, you'll see revision on, like, suggested revision to how that matters. Which is the other reason why, a little time to digest this would be good, and we could just go up or down next, next page. It's, I'm thinking.
So are we going to comment on this now?
Well.
We're getting back to.
I will look at you for how you would like to proceed. You have, um, initial response, uh, comments. It would be great if you had them now so that we don't have, you know, potentially not a good meeting.
Well, one that jumps out at me is, you know, I wonder if in your revised language section.
Yep.
Does it make sense that the, the communication goes through the liaison to that particular committee? Instead of every.
Oh, that's true.
Going through a, a share, because that's thirty different.
Yeah, actually, I, I mean, I did the last sentence, I actually had that thought at the last minute too. So I did say, the last sentence is, uh, writing a mail with a select board appointed liaison to the board. And Deborah says, just copy. Right? Like, the point of liaison to change or. Right, so that's like, if you want to know something, right? Is this just general information or is like, have every other week we get a packet of information and then you have questions to call, right? So I should be calling Jan and not Nancy if Nancy has an item on the. No, that's why I, I pulled out action versus inquiry.
Okay.
Because the way it was written originally, I was like, that's, doesn't make any sense, it's delays and. Yeah, you usually get, I get a call, but I kind of constantly get a transfer to remember is, has the agenda of it.
Right.
So the macro question on all of these is, is this even necessary? It was written, we know it was written for a reason in ninety-eight. So that's the big, that's the macro question on the policy.
Well, I agree on the action, I, the information, I want much of it out. That's very information, so I don't know that information is different from the action. Very agree. I agree with that.
I, um. Yeah. I think we just want to protect bombarding, you know, make sure we're protecting, not bombarding all the firm heads.
Yeah.
From all of us, so there's a funnel there at this period of times, which is, that's a little funnel there.
Matthew.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know, I'm going to think of.
No, I, 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 I don't think it is useful to try to restrict and codify how people communicate with each other. I do think it's most important that none of us on this board tell anyone in the chain of command to do anything. Without going through the town administrator. I consider boards and committees a little different.
Me too.
Because I think those are very much, we have liaisons to those boards. We have, you know, I look at my roles and liaison to, to most of the boards on the, of the, to advise them, to, to encourage them. To try to clear things up where necessary. And I think that as any effort to hit on a piece of paper as to how any one of us is dealing with our boards and committees. And I do think it's important to, and I don't think we've done it, is to solidify what the role of liaison is. And if we do that, then I think we've gone a long way. Um, and so I think, I would never dream to tell anyone in DPW as much as I'd like to tell them. I wouldn't do it. And i- if I'm successful and I know it relates to DPW and I don't think I'm stepping over my bounds, I copy Jim. Or I, or I have him on the communication line, so all of a sudden that.
But I, but I think, I heard you saying, and that's you, and I think any kind of do a policy, but the, 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 the other, the other behavior, right?
And it's protected, right, moving forward. So maybe not have tight, tight constraints, but outline, because there will be people that run for office that come in and have big heads and are powerful. And just think they can call anybody and tell them what to do because they're on the select board. Right, and that's a one to protect. Yeah, Mike, yeah, no, I, I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think that we need less, less language about that stuff.
Yeah.
And, and more, and, and to sort of set the bar for people, whoever they are, coming in on this board. That, you know, we're collaborative, that we are, we, we don't run the town. The administrator runs the town in terms of the, of day-to-day operations and the budget and, and all that. And, um, I, I guess I could ask the town administrator, you know, how, how strictly do you, how strict would you like this to be?
You know, we, I could ask this question when I could hire six plus years ago. Um, we did drive it on the street and there's a big pothole, it was a branch down. You don't have to email me or call me, you can just call and say, hey, pothole. But you can't call up and say, my daughter has a soccer game today, I want the entire DPW, I want the, kind of grasp my hand. Right? Uh, because I want it to be, so, right, it has to be some fluidness, right? Or it's a weekend, it's an emergency, whatever. But generally, anytime you want to get something done, it should be coming through me. So I can say, well, sorry, it's Memorial Day weekend, they're all at the cemetery, they're not going to get the soccer field today. This is not going to happen.
I think, yeah.
That's right.
It's okay.
So really good point about defining relationship with liaison, I mean, they could get added to that, but we'll write that to that. Uh, because it doesn't, it, it bay right now, because, so that, I think, great suggestion then. I think that our, the stuff that we're trying to accomplish, this policy as a release, but we can also add it. But what this policy says right now is nobody. And so I don't know, and then I just want to put that little thing out there. So I get, I can send a grid of yours name, and then you can tweak it, figure out the language that'll go with how we behave. But let's say, you know, the head of our fictitious dog walking committee, the, the blue walking committee. Decides to, you know, call up DPW and say, you need to redo all of the lines with blue osprey. Is this policy necessary so that we can point to it and say, nah, 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 nah? That's not how we do this.
Right, it, even request for information, right? I want to know when my street's going to be paved, okay? It's on the list next year. I want a list of every street that we've paved for the last fifteen years, how much we spent, how many, no, that's a project now.
Right, that's a pretty of a motivation you're asking, right? Which is another whole story.
I would have to create that document, create the information class.
So what I'm thinking is, I, I feel like we're looking at, it's, it's the select board policy, right? Well, this, the policy we're looking at right now does not define that we're. Okay, sorry, right now. Okay, wait, say that again? So the policy two ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Just says, any request for action or information has to go through. Doesn't say if we ask, it's, it doesn't specify who's doing the half.
Oh.
And that's.
Where is this document residing?
It's the select board policy, the select board office.
Okay.
One of the select board rules.
But that's not one of the.
It's not your right to tell.
Is to use the, the example of the dog walking committee, the hall of the DPW. That's, that should be in the, the board, right, the, the board and committee handbook?
I think that's the point, Karen, is we're trying to clean it up because this is an operational policy of the town and the board's, right? And it doesn't, it's very broad.
This is an operational policy of the board's select.
Right.
So.
It doesn't belong to every public, it's only the board.
And what I'm saying is, I think it should, i- if we think, it sounds like it actually should be in the board and committee handbook. The committee members and chairs shall not do what we're saying here, right? I think that we need to be there, but I think what we're talking about, and this is us. Okay, that's my impression of it, that this, you think this is strictly relates to the select board? Oh, okay, so, well, then I, then it does, yeah, so that your point is, right, that is.
The answer must have come in, yeah.
I think you may want, just this one, to table this for the discussion, because I agree with you that, I mean, even in that first part, any group for information of any town department. Maybe I, I see Nick for rep, how's it going? I'm supposed to see, see, right, but that's what, that's the suggestion revised language. Uh, I agree, we need to type, because I, I don't want, you know, the library, how, you know, a lot of folks being coming in. The, right, the difference between a general type of request versus the real, you know, how many books, blah, 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 blah. Totally, I get it. But to try to, we need to type it up.
So let's try to, so what, what I'm hearing is we just, we can tighten up this language.
I would incorporate it into the larger document.
Yeah, but I think everybody wants to see it before you do, so I think, if, if you can hear what they're saying, what everyone's saying, you know, Karen, we'll read some written feedback on this one, that one will be more helpful. Yeah, just to keep things moving along.
Okay.
Because I don't disagree with the, I think, well, yeah.
Good, well, that, why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, you can. No, and you guys are in the hard room, so, but.
Yeah, no, the ones that you think are really, and then you just take a shot.
Okay, so ten ninety-eight is the next, ready to launch?
Yes.
My ninety-eight is, um, has to do with one day, wine, our favorite, one day beer, wine and malt licenses. Uh, this is, um, actually redundant to fifty-seven sixteen, breath right? And we're also reviewing all of these procedures with town council right now.
Right, and this, do we just change this that?
So we need, technically, we can, we should rescind this one.
Correct.
Because it's been superseded by fifty-seven sixteen.
That does not appear in our town house.
And we're going to come back to you with a whole batch, uh, next time, right?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, with all of this sort of liquor related. Okay, so, um, I think if you, and if you would like to rescind this now, that's consistent with them before. And if you get back, at least get one off the books.
Yeah, we have three to be rescinded and we're exactly that.
Oh, okay, that's great.
So I'm on.
So we'll, we'll.
If you agree, we'll just leave one exactly.
We'll rescind at the end.
Yeah, I said she did it, I'll recite.
I'm not sure. Um, let me ask the board, is the board in agreement to rescind that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so P and E.
Yay. The next is fifteen ninety-eight, which is, um, uh, you're going to be late.
This has to be a policy?
Now, I would suggest that this gets incorporated into our procedures if it's not other, I haven't had a chance to take it since now.
Sure.
I didn't, I had, before I realized that we had a other, I did draft some, I'll cover it though.
Okay.
There's that, so.
Wait, so it's gonna be ninety-eight, are we rescinding?
No. Fifty, it's the. Oh, that's a good.
So I'd like to suggest, you know, mine, that we shouldn't have to, somebody should have to notify someone in case you're twenty-four.
Oh, of course, right.
Yeah, we're just saying, put it in, so you, this larger document, why would we?
We're going to, we're going to call it select board procedures, and it's going to become its own policy.
Yeah, this can be one, hopefully, uh, puts it in now. Um, you're right, how mad the chair, we could. We could either rescind it or have it, either out of policy. Or wait until we accept the new policy, rescind it, so we don't have to gain all of them. Oh, no, we go completely for this. Doesn't matter.
I think that's what we should do, Karen, do it all, look, have a big policy, then we're rescinding.
Is everybody okay with that?
You want to add to the sin file?
No, well, we got to, we got to change all of the days and procedures.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we had two visitors, want to make sure they weren't looking for anything in particular. Yeah, they were just coming to meet, so.
Oh, that's nice. She's there, sorry to stay, sorry to stay in the way.
No, they were just sleeping, I just, I just want to make sure they weren't looking for anything in particular.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
They got bored.
That's true, yeah.
Like, no, just listening in.
That would just.
Thank them for their interest.
Absolutely.
That's awesome, because we're so entertaining.
Policy is not that interesting.
Actually, he said, it's what he does, the policy stuff is, loves that sort of stuff.
Oh, come back, I would say, worry about.
I love, we're.
People.
Did you guys say it was long?
She'll have it.
All right, sixteen.
Okay, sixteen ninety-eight. Uh, this one's interesting, I'm sure some in the audience would be interested in that. This is also a board, um, issue. This is when we, we just had town meeting last night, if we had voted, you know, we had a minority position, we voted three-two on something. This policy says, uh, that you would only, that only the majority view, only the majority opinion would be stated at town meeting representing the article. And then if you, you were the minority, you want to talk about it, you got to have the board. Um, I, I think this is a little bit different than a board procedure.
This is more in the moderators.
Yeah.
In the old house, I think.
Yeah.
What I'd like to know is, does the moderator?
Yeah, what I'd like to know is, does the moderator have a handbook?
Oh, yeah, they do, they have a state, they have a state one.
Well, it.
And they're supposed to follow.
Well. It's, it's.
I suppose.
Right. It slides around.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I I think we should have the moderator look at this.
Well, when Tony had an opposite opinion about the voting of the board, he went to.
He went to the floor, well, that's because that's where it's all zero.
On, on the other hand, if someone from the audience asks.
Yeah.
Then I think it's right for the person who is in the minority to be able to get to the podium to express the minority view if someone asks.
I agree, I agree with that, I, and I also agree that I think this is the moderator's policy, you know, the principal policy.
Yeah.
Cause it's about town, town meeting procedures.
But doesn't the board members need to know what to do?
The moderator tells me.
Yeah, but the moderator tells you, I don't think it should be.
Well, this is our time.
This is telling the board that when the board presents.
I know.
So all it says is, if you want to do the. Minority reporting, you have to go do it as Tony did, it's, it really isn't a moderator thing, so, how the board presents their eye.
Well, let me say, unless someone from the audience asks, who who's, who won the red voter to answer this? Um, I don't think the person in the minority should have.
You have to go all the way to the floor.
No.
I agree, so maybe you just, you insert that exception, if people think that this belongs here, then insert that exception, which I agree with you, that's happened. A bazillion times, yeah, I want to know who voted no.
Yeah.
So.
Explain yourself.
You stand up and you say why you voted no.
Right. Um. Yeah, I would suspect that the reason it's in place is so, we don't read each other's comments, but let's say, okay, I sign, you're gonna do article one. And. For whatever reason, you get up and say, well, the board voted three two, it's a stupid, we wouldn't say this, but it was a bad idea, and here's why it was a bad idea, we'd be like, why can't we?
No, that makes sense, but yeah, with this first sentence, it's a, it's a bad.
So, I did, I did set up some revised language, but I will add, um, an exception for a floor request. Um, where if something's happened, uh, instead of, well, send that, then send that.
You guys okay with that?
Yes.
And you agree that it's a standalone, because it's not really. It is board procedure, but I don't know, do you want it standalone or incorporated? I think to the extent that that this is just letting anyone on the board know how we are supposed to act.
Yeah, I think it goes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Or be in the board, yeah, I agree.
I mean, we can also, don't, it's wanted by the moderator.
Right, okay.
Show them up.
Um. May I also say, however, that. This could easily be circumvented by whoever the minority is, by just pointing to someone in the audience. So it's, I'm just pointing out that.
Yeah, you can cover everything, such as.
No, exactly, but it's, it depends on how heated it is.
That was us.
Um, I think that's perfect, but, okay, so the next eighteen ninety eight, this is board to pay appointment process, uh, process. Um, aside from the fact that I think it's not well written, it's very. Um. There are a number of things, if we look at the second page of my, of the schedule, there's. References in there about how you have to post it, basically, so put it in local media, uh, I just thought that maybe it'd be updated because we don't have local media. Um. It, I think, it does include that the board will consider the input from the chair of whatever committee has a vacancy. And I think that's really important to keep, I just apply that. In this policy, I'm sorry, I got, I, because I love this stuff, I'm totally. The last line in the first paragraph is that they encourage people to be positive and have a helpful demeanor when making this decision. I think that's ridiculous because it's completely subjective, and I would just say that we need to take that out of the policy.
I just wish I knew what was going on there, I know, something was crazy.
I think we should make sure that it's more clear that that any vacancy, not just a reservation, I think it's a part, be just a way to break. It also only requires it to be, uh, an opening to be posted one week prior to, uh, filling. First off, we don't meet every week, and second off, I don't think that's enough time to solicit, so I suggest minimum two weeks. For your consideration. Uh, and the last sentence. And, and, uh, the select, board of select will attempt to appoint individuals to only one board at a, oh, wait, no, that's, sorry. Last sentence.
Well, this is the six year rule.
Oh, yeah, well, it's captured. Some language I've been trying, I was like, that was the policy, you shouldn't try to do something, you're either staying what you're doing or you're done. And then I want to, I know, and then I, my question could be another, a lot of parts to this, but the board. Do you want to put, oh, it says any other exceptions to the six year rule, or when is, do you want to add something that says something about institutional knowledge, or. The time to amend those exceptions is usually because of a certain value, um, that longevity brings to that position. And I didn't know, I didn't draft it in here, but I wondered if that's something you want to try to define? Or to carve out?
I think you can add more institutional knowledge right at the end of that sentence.
What, the select board may provide an exception, is that where you are?
Yeah.
Do we even adhere to any six year? I mean, I, when we go through the board, I don't even know which ones, how long.
Yeah, we have. We have in the past. I'll be very candid, there have been, you know, dysfunctional boards in the past. So you want that rule, not everybody always gets along, I don't mean this board, I don't mean this board, it's been dysfunctional in the past too, but. There have been committees out there that have been dysfunctional, where the first group of personalities and skillset just doesn't jive, they don't get along, and. Yeah, you want that ability to make sure those committees operate the work in the manner of which you've put them together.
Oh, I agree with that, that you want that ability, I just.
Or there's people that just don't want to leave the board.
Yeah, I guess I didn't.
But they don't want to leave, but you might want them to leave, that's my view.
Well, we're doing some fresh blood.
Yes. Yes. Yes, we do, yes, we do, she has that, and that's what we changed with Lorraine in the last year, that.
Yes, we do, I'm guessing.
We're crazy on, because we kind of changed that, just because they're up for a renewal, doesn't mean the position isn't open.
Yeah.
Right, because it's a renewal, and if the board feels that that particular person shouldn't be renewed, it.
Or someone else who's unqualified.
If I have steps off, then we should have the ability to replace. Does that make sense?
Oh, we should.
It's not how it was always handled.
Are there someone or the report that aren't that well? I'm just saying, would we remove some at any point?
You can, it's.
It's never happened, is that, I can get that, it's fault.
Yeah, they have.
It's happened, that's happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. People can be disruptive, you know.
But they are, okay, so we can, we send them appointments.
Yeah. And that's why I was trying to say, this is one of the most important things this board does, and we've got thirty five committees that keep. Our town moving forward and all these initiatives where that expertise.
I think it's more than that, right?
I said, we're going thirty five, I'm like, I can't keep up, we'll keep that anymore. Okay, let's keep going, I think, or, or do we like this language?
So, I would, I revised the language, um, second to September, I I I think you suggested language. That addresses those concerns, it says, you have to post it on the website, you have to, have you had a chance to look at this?
Yeah. Yeah, just speak to other means.
They made it two weeks. Do you want me to add no qualified replacements, or, um, or in the case of institutional knowledge is beneficial to the board? Or is it not?
Yep.
Just so. We could put that at the bottom of the, in the third paragraph.
What do you want to add, Susan?
A public, um. You know, I mean. I'm sorry. Public, you know, so that, like, that's a transparent process as to who we're selecting, if there's one whole people.
Uh, we also said public news. Uh, that's a very interesting.
I see, so you just want to make sure that that's put in here, so the person isn't just appointed.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
More.
Press colleagues may not have just appointed, and no one knows what happens.
So, so.
I would rather for us to be transparent.
Yeah, yeah, all appointments will be made, posted.
I would put it, I would put it right in that second paragraph.
And all appointments will be made, will be, all. Deliberations.
All applicants will be interviewed by select.
Public. Yeah.
All applicants will.
The public, yeah.
Will be interviewed at a public select board.
And vote will, and vote will be taken at public meetings, or something, yeah.
Um, I had a concern, Ashley, the select board will solicit and consider recommendations for appointments from the chair of the relevant board. To me, they can invite all their friends to come in with that line.
Does it need to be written at all?
I don't think so.
No, all right, that was in the original?
From nineteen one eight, but.
Right.
I don't think that's in the draft, personally.
Well, wait, so, can, even opening of an historic commission, you wouldn't?
No, we tend, but we don't have to solicit, it doesn't need to be, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be in the policy.
You don't have to say it, that's.
It doesn't have to be in the policy, what if after, ask them if you want to?
I mean, what we currently do is we advertise the openings.
Right.
We don't go to the chairs or the committees to say, do you have any people?
Right.
I would say, as liaison, I will often encourage the chair.
You can certainly do that.
But I don't think that's something that's gonna be written down, but. Okay, I don't think it will be written down, especially because the chair can be a dysfunctional person.
But to, you know, but the thing that we solicit them for their, who they want.
Yeah, we'll take it out, let's take it out, straight.
Okay, so that's removed, now add, um, the provision about public interviews.
Yes.
Transparency.
Okay, love it. Um. Next is twenty three ninety eight, oh, yeah, this is, uh, this is.
Oh, this is a big discussion. I know, this was a policy.
I know. And we are in violation of it.
You know, this was a school committee policy too, and they got rid of it.
It's stupid.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, it was like.
So, I would, then in the, in the, we have, this policy.
It was in nineteen ninety eight, I think it should have.
It's twenty nineteen. The, uh. Select, the, the, uh, show, the selection of officers, organization of the board, is defined in the twenty nineteen policies that exist.
So can we put this?
I think.
Can we strike with this?
Uh, it is silent, it, um, so they actually can go.
Um, I have a motion to strike this policy.
I second that.
I, I read them.
You made it.
Oh, right, it was, okay.
I am happy with that.
I'm sorry, it's striking, you don't need to, the word, don't mess socialize it.
No. Okay, then, uh, the next would be twenty four ninety eight. Which is, uh, performance bonds, and it answers to no one, the recommending to be, to rescind, um, because we don't do it, and it's not necessarily.
Right.
Okay. That was easy. That one for us. Um, next is ninety five ninety eight.
This never happens.
Twenty five ninety eight.
I'm sorry, did I say? Um, litigation, this, oh, yeah, so, we don't record, this is basically, if we're in lawsuit. No one's allowed to talk to anybody except town health, basically. Um. The way this is.
Who's, who's the male one?
Us.
Us.
So we can't talk to children. We can only talk to parents. And that, that to me is, ah, we should not keep talking to town council, I don't. Without going through Jane. I think the intent, this, I wasn't hearing ninety eight, Mike, I think the intent is. You don't want anybody on the board, uh, to the media, talking to.
Well, let's clarify that, that's not what this says, so we clarify that.
Yes. But it also said, this policy.
Maybe it's not entered into any public comment, maybe surrounding issue.
And I'm, and I'm wrong, it's written, it's no town employee or public official. Which is us.
Right, which is all of us.
Which is us, which is everybody in the building.
Right.
So, in every board and committee that, I mean, depends on how far, if you define a public official. So what, A, do you think this policy, A policy like this is necessary?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you think we should clarify it, in what ways do you think we should clarify?
I think it should be under procedures.
It, it relates to all town employees, though, it's not.
Was it in the H R? Did you talk to, um?
Uh, we did not ask all about this.
Wow, because it does say town employees, so.
Didn't call, is there any in the personnel policies, is there anything that restricts? Why don't, why don't we go back?
I mean, and, just, town employees aren't supposed to speak to the press.
Correct.
Without going through me first. We call the government as spokesperson for the town, so. Someone want to talk about it, you'll sit to a beach commissioner, I would say, Corey, you should probably talk to that. Guess how it's going on.
But what if somebody comes to, what, a member of our shellfish advisory committee, and said, what's going on with the lawsuit?
Yeah.
Is there, there's nothing other than this policy.
Yeah, perhaps, I think that's a good example, you should just defer to the town administrator or.
We don't come on, at the occasion.
Yeah.
All right. I think there's a difference between employees, and I I guess technically, we're employees, I don't know, I don't know, we're like, twenty five cents a year.
We are, we are.
If, but I'm, I'm concerned that. I'm gonna look to Andrew on this, is, is this a freedom of speech for public official, for elected officials to be told, they can't. I, I, I would. I would suggest, we're trying to find a line here.
Yeah, I mean. You know, a lot of this, again, it's also policy. You know, put a select board jail.
Right, right.
Yes, you violate them, but, it's kind of like, uh. But I, I mean, I would, I mean, number one, I think we'd also feel, talk to your own council. If you're personally named as a public official for whatever reason.
Yeah, that's how it all up.
Uh, and then what if there's a kind of, like, you, you can't even imagine what some of those things may be.
Right.
And. There might be times when we do want to talk to the media about some frivolous lawsuit, or someone doing something. Um, and the publisher knows that they're possibly there, wasting their taxpayer dollars, because it's important. Uh, but you can't predict that in the future, or what's near, so, yeah, should there be, uh, tightened up? How is that decided, how we go forward, I, I agree with you, I think careful boxing this in.
I, I think, there, there's certainly plenty of case law, I think, about the right employer, employers to dictate the lineup of their employees. I think it's extremely dangerous to get into the business of dictating the, um, what publicly elected officials are allowed to say. Um, about anything, now, we hope that they refuse their best judgment in terms of, you know, if, if, if a member of this board. It, I mean, it's possible that someone could be inherently disagreed with. The position that we're taking on a particular issue of litigation, and I don't think that it's right of us to say, you can't say anything.
You'd be.
Well, and the flip of, I agree with you, but the flip of that coin, just step was out, we can't.
There's obviously a flip on this issue.
Yeah, on this is the exposure to the county. We want to protect the town in some levels of saying, but, your, your officials said this, this, and this to. That you would D T D, it shows bad intent, it shows, you know, it's whatever.
So what I, what I'm hearing is, needs to be sentenced, it's hard.
Right, so I would, I would propose, we look, we start the policies for personnel, see what's in there already, we have not done that.
We need something.
You know, what, what, what does it already have in there, and maybe we don't need to. Be, I would also then, um, suggest that we think about adding something specifically about boards of committees, and that's a really good point about, um. That any. And, and then we'll have to think about, well, we, we don't want to be arguing, but we should say, in the event that there's, you know, uh, any lawsuit that impacts your boards and committee, please defer questions to.
The town.
Or maintenance, every, every party is speaking every, every time.
So, yeah, whatever, to your point, Lorraine, or restrict. Well, put it this way, I, I think the. Well, put it this way, I, I think the boards and committees.
We're trying to take that over.
Well, the, the boards and committees, other than planning board, I guess, and maybe the board assessors, the elected committees are, I think, are different than the appointed committees. And I think we can certainly say to boards and committees that are appointed by the select board, that is, the select board's policy that any issues related to pending litigation be referred to.
A board member.
Right, yeah, or, or the town administrator.
So we'll, we'll also check the handbook and see if it's in there, because we have another little running list, which is not, it's not the code.
Um, okay, I don't think we should get elected officials.
I, I think it has to be for everybody. You can't have multiple people speaking on behalf of the town when it comes to litigation.
Well, and that's why we can be written of not speaking on behalf of the town, but if somebody asks them to have an opinion, you, you can't stifle that.
You can have an opinion on the suit, but you can't discuss the specifics of the lawsuit, can't get into the details, because that's when you're opening the town up to.
To a further.
The liability.
Right.
So if you wanna say, I think this is a stupid lawsuit.
How about?
Then that's your opinion, but if you said, well, you know, the town's wrong because this, this, and this, and, and you're putting us in a, in a really difficult position. I'd say it's a policy, so if they do it, there's no, like, what's the punishment?
And I, I was more than admitted, I absolutely disagree about elected officials. I think it's a different category. I think Jim, you have the certainty as the employer of most of the people in town hall, the right to tell them what they can and cannot say, and what circumstances, et cetera. And I think boards and committees similarly that are not elected should recognize that they should not be coming to young pending litigation, litigation. However, I think if there's a member of this board who wants to say something about it at their peril, um, then, and, and that's. The peril of having elected officials, I, I don't think that anyone should be telling the select board, or the planning board, or the board assessors, because they're elected by the people, what they can and cannot say. And, and, and under what circumstances, I totally disagree.
Well, then John Clark can also say, she won't decide either, she's an elected.
She's an elected official.
I guess, I'm just.
Yeah.
We'll have it get on his policy.
Does it make any sense to have, you know, Bertrand look at this, like, does he have a policy like this somewhere else in another town that maybe get a copy of for advice? Jim?
Yeah.
Let me, I just, I can refer to.
I just think it's an interesting topic and one that maybe we need a little bit.
We'll do more on that.
More, yeah.
If you could get some examples, we'll help our town handle that.
None of the towns I've been in, it was one voice. Not necessarily the town administrator, it could be the chair of the select board, but one voice speaks to the town on leave of notice.
Right. But then, is that a policy or is that just, uh, the way, you know?
I think it would, I'll check and know if we have policy to, to practice.
It's definitely a practice in most places, that's. But Karen pointed, we appoint more as our, our spokesperson, and one of us asked that.
Badly.
Right, or that's great with the, with it, we have the, I would think, have the right to say, no, I don't.
I think, I think defining better the sorts of application we're talking about, because, I mean, that's a way, maybe it is. But there's also the cost actually of getting the whole people legislation pending or threatening, that we didn't talk about, open to what you can give with some, I mean, with some of that money and other things. So I think, Jim was saying, I think I would, yeah, with that, on board to make sure of.
Right, well, see, I, I want, I want to point out that we do have a way of, uh, dealing with litigation in executive session. And I think part of the, uh, process of that is that we understand as board members that whatever is discussed in that meeting is not to be made public until such time as the litigation is over, settled, whatever it is. Um, and I think that, I, I would be, I would prefer to use that as a mechanism for discouraging board members from talking, because it's right there in the, in the motion or the whatever, that, you know.
It's under procedures as well.
Right, so, and I, I don't, I don't want us to get involved in a first amendment issue, that I really do think that we should have policy for employees. And we should have, the, the board adheres to the executive session rules, procedures.
We'll check with Leo in that, that Karen mentioned, you've already, you're in proceedings.
Okay, I'm a good enough. Um, Nexus is an interesting one, flag location been scheduled is twenty seven ninety eight, so, Lorraine, can I? You have been deeply involved in this conversation, so can I ask you to walk us through it?
Sure. So the first thing I did was go to solicit where all the flags were located in the town, because that was originally in the, uh, policy. So I put together the second pages of list, there's thirty two flags in a town situated. And it involves, uh, four departments plus four, six schools in the lighthouse. Six flags for property, I should say, in the lighthouse. So I drafted a, I mean, the biggest complaint we get from residents, we get a lot of phone calls, and the flags are not passed out. And all the flags, it's a respect thing, that's a lot of what there is. Um, so I drafted a draft policy for your review and consideration. That the town situated will comply with the United States flag status and half staff notification received from the Commonwealth and Massachusetts Bureau of the State House. It is responsibility of the town administrator and department head to provide locations that weren't short and wide. And then just listed the number of flags, the location, the responsibility.
It would be nice to, it doesn't need to be in the policy, but to know why, and you, you know, I've been driving around all, all week, though, why aren't all our flags in the house?
Well, all you have to do is sign up for the.
Yeah, for the.
Notification. Anybody can sign up for the notification anyway.
Yeah.
And I, in the previous, I don't know if I sent it out, so, but I have how to sign up for it.
I think you did, yeah, it's in the back. So I, I'm fine with this, is there anything additional? You guys think these we added?
Do you have any concern with this, when everything's been drawn, which is?
No, I mean, you know, we got a notice on a Saturday morning, we generally don't break something in a four hours' work time, but the flags now. It's just, we do them, I think, on Monday. We could, but again, it's expensive, because seems like the government's putting the flag down quite a bit lately.
Yeah.
So that's just.
Well, there's no timing on this.
It, it, the, 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 the notifications have come out very specific, specific dates and times.
Oh, yeah, it'll say, must be lower.
From, from this time.
April ninth, April fourteenth.
Well, do we have, some of this says, um, if notifications come out during holiday or weekend hours, every attempt will be made to comply.
I've never seen that happen, really. I mean, I think that pretty much during business hours.
That they do, or they don't.
Well, we don't have this.
Or in the mind, we just forgot, if we got something on Saturday, remember.
Because it could, it can happen. You get, sometimes we get a.
I guess the president would lie.
Yeah.
It was late notice, or it was gone, we don't break something.
It would be a hardship, gets around the old acquired car.
Well, it's also.
Yeah, I think the challenge is having the notification go to the right place and the right person at the right time. I mean, let's say, for example, the notification goes to somebody that's not in that day.
Right.
Um, and they don't inform the D P W that, you know, the flag needs to be loaded.
Well, so.
It used, the notifications used to go directly to public grounds, that's changed, I believe.
Public where?
Public grounds.
Grounds, yeah.
And I think now they go to Kevin Catherine. Um, that's one example.
Well, couldn't it?
Well, maybe it goes through a public safety people or.
To me, it's a management issue of department head with this, there is this.
Yeah, yeah. What the policy.
Just a really odd.
If it went to department heads, then they'll know who's in and who's not in that day, to do it or not, right?
I mean, that's why I thought Jim and the department head should resolve it, the issues.
Yeah, who's the right person. Well, let me, let me just ask this one. We're required by statute to comply.
Right.
Do we need, is it beneficial to have this, because the list could change?
Well, hopefully not, because we really can't help anyone with lawsuits. Honestly, it's really still.
So what we're really doing in this.
So we really need thirty two flags? I mean, that is a question.
We accept donations of flags in the fields, we accept donations of flags here, we accept, but somebody has to manage all this.
All right, I'm not gonna be the one that commission takes them down.
Well, you can't take them, I mean, you can't take them down now. All these flags.
Don't they say no more flags?
You know, did this.
No, fine, let it go.
We took down a flag, we took down a flag at the field all winter, because none of them.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
Just gets rolling.
Yeah.
Well, the merit, you know.
Yeah.
Is it the same time?
I understand.
With the harbor master, the marathon is seasonal.
Yeah, it's not gonna be out in the northeastern.
So anybody that told me it was seasonal, I just put seasonal.
Okay, hopefully.
All right, let's move on, guys. So are we okay with this, then?
Well.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we complete that in action, I don't think there's no other. All right, we can over, uh.
Let's go.
Almost, we're almost finished. Okay, so the thirty ninety eight is signatures of the board, um, and we're recommending, Larry, do you wanna walk through that one too, for signature department?
Um.
Oh, oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't.
It should be revised to incorporate in the board procedure policy revision, we said.
Yep.
Uh, need to specify emergency signature authority, and require chair and board. Um.
Oh, right, right. So the way this is written is another one that's kinda clunky, and so I'd like to revise or reconsideration to include in our procedures, that what you just said.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll revise that on if everybody agrees.
Okay.
And put it in the, uh, procedures.
Procedures.
Yeah, more procedures.
Thirty one ninety eight.
Wish I knew about this one.
Is time of adjournment, which apparently.
Oh, yeah. Apparently we.
We did twice.
No.
Yeah, well, we. So we did it in, uh, in ninety eight, it was eleven o'clock, and then in twenty one, with my signature on it, we did it again. Um, and virtually the same. Um, I think that both can be, we can rescind thirty one ninety eight, we've done it.
Yeah.
And we can incorporate, and it already made me an app, we can incorporate, if the board would like, and this policy incorporated into our procedure.
Sure.
Okay, so rescind one, incorporate. You gotta rescind thirty one ninety eight?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, and then the last, oh, that's, and the last one's the same one, but that we will incorporate.
All right, that's it. Thank you so much.
I would just need a motion.
And get a memo.
To rescind forty more of these.
Oh, like the dollars is.
We're going to motion, we're going to.
Uh, we're going to. So I can want a suggested motion.
Yes. So you have a suggested motion, on the top one, move to rescind the select board policies. We added one, twenty three dash ninety eight, and you, you agreed with all the others. So if anybody wants to.
Which one did we add, right?
You added twenty three dash ninety eight.
Twenty three.
Twenty four dash ninety eight?
Twenty three, no.
No, twenty three dash ninety eight.
Oh, yeah, that's, oh, yeah.
That's crashed that one. Um, and then the rest, we will.
So I have rescind thirty one ninety eight, ten ninety eight, twenty four ninety eight, and twenty three ninety eight.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Susan Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, and the rest, we'll move on.
And then we have, um, we have moved to revise select board policy eighteen ninety eight, board and committee, board and committee vagaries, these are discussed. They agree.
Oh, well, don't we have to? Ninety eight, um.
Board and committee vagaries, as we've got, I have.
Oh, yeah, we did, yeah, that is, all right, I was. Oh, yeah, so this was, yes, thank you, Louie. So this was taking out, yeah, this, taking out that we'll consider, that the suggested language revised, except. We won't solicit in front of the chairs, and we'll add that all applicants we interviewed and voted, and opposeded at a board meeting.
And we're gonna add our institutional knowledge, we slipped into last pack.
And, yeah, sorry, that was bad.
But I think that we could approve that.
And then clean it up.
With those changes, we could, you know, rescind.
Give it up.
I'm fine.
Yeah, okay.
I have a motion to defer you.
Thirty ninety eight.
The revised call.
That is revised, next meeting, and.
So we're rescind eighteen ninety eight and approve the new policy.
We'll go, second. Second, my Karen's again, good. Okay.
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lorraine, will you clean that up, or do you want me to?
I'll clean that, and I'll send it to you for review.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you both again.
And then we have, uh, moved to revise select board policy twenty seven dash ninety eight, that's the flag policy. We'll actually rescind that and approve the new, the new policy.
Double.
Go ahead, move, go ahead, a motion to rescind twenty seven ninety eight flag displays and revise as presented this evening.
Move by Mr. Goodrich, or second by Mr. Goodrich, sorry. All in favor?
I'm with the motion.
I support.
Okay.
Mark, Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we agreed, uh, to rescind thirty dash ninety eight, right?
Uh, we're gonna do that when we do the whole policy, the whole procedure book program.
Okay, so then.
So we'll, we'll just table that until we have the final.
Okay, and sixty six dash twenty one.
Meaning duration, we, we rescinded one, we already.
Yeah, twenty three dash ninety eight.
Yeah, and we're gonna, we'll, we'll rescind the other one when we do the procedures over.
Add to policies.
Correct.
All right, that's it. I can figure that out. We'll have a lot for next meeting, because we have town council review on the lit policies.
Uh, yeah, and we will, I would try to review a piece of paper like this with, with discussion and, um, if we suggest language council in the packets, see about it.
Well, we have the redline copies from town council, but Karen and I, we need to review it.
Okay. Yeah. So we.
Can you think of a better way we can present this information to you, make it easier for you?
No, I mean, I don't, I think it's.
I think it's just.
My thing's, it's just, yeah, it's fine, I mean, I don't think we're doing anything.
Okay, just to know, you know, there would be something that would be easier for you. Do you have any suggestions, want us to know?
I, I think it's.
Um, I mean, we only, we only have nearly two meetings left, but we're trying to get resolved on.
Okay.
So the last two meetings will be some kind of.
Well, maybe if we can, you know, I'm guilty of not reading until up here, just trying to see it, really go through it, um. Maybe if we can get, and I also, I guess you say this, but I do like the printed copy of it to strike and go through, as we had tonight. So maybe if we can make sure we get that before, give us a, a time, some time, so we can look at it, so.
The problem is, we're meeting Thursday before the next meeting, and then I gotta do, it's my regular work, plus this on top, so.
You're right.
I know, you know what, if we get it done, we get it done. If we don't, it passes, well, then it means nothing to you. We're gonna get it done in twenty twenty four, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah.
Think that, that, and the priority for me is the, what we're gonna do next week, it's just the whole procedure thing, and, uh, the liquor stop, the liquor licenses. Before you do it, is institutionally valid for that policy.
Okay.
Uh, and the rest, if we, if it's assembled over, then.
I mean, I think the newer ones are gonna be a lot easier, like the penler and some of the ones we've put in the last few years.
Right. Yeah.
It's these old, old ones that are challenging.
Okay, great. All right, Karen, right, thank you. All right, so, um. Julie Conroy, who we interviewed, um, during our board and, uh, committee interviews a few months ago, came forth to be a great, great, um, asset, great, uh. Great background, lots of background of postal resiliency, and, um, I know we had a lot of great candidates for the conservation commission that night, and, uh, somebody else was chosen, so. I don't know, I think, Lorraine, you reached back out to Julie to see if she'd be interested in the postal. I think Lorraine, you reached back out to Julie to see if she'd be interested in the coastal advisory.
Yeah, the board asked me to do that, we're hoping.
Which is great, and so thank you, yeah, because we knew she's such a great asset, and we want to have her knowledge summer among our committees, so we're here tonight to, um, hopefully appoint Julie to the coastal advisory meeting. Uh, if anybody has any other commentary, or if she's made it. She'll be a great asset to Cory.
Yes. And it's somewhat unusual to remember someone so specifically, because we've interviewed so many people, that I think she made a real impression on all of us.
Awesome. No motion?
Move to appoint Julie Conroy to the coastal advisory commission for term of holding, or to assess his name.
Move by Andrew Goodrich, second by Susan Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is, um, as we note, Don Knapp retired. Um, so he is no longer here to be the custodian of our veterans' graves. So while we search for a new veterans officer, um, we, Mike Green, I don't know if he graciously stood up, but we appreciate it if he did, thank you, Mike, as he does, has stepped forward to be the interim custodian of veterans' graves until a new veterans agent is hired. So, thank you, Mike.
He's not vacationed, but he'll be happy when he gets back.
Well, he was here last night.
Did you tell him that?
Yeah, I know, so like, did he, did he raise his hand, or we just say, yes, you'd be great at this.
So Mike, that sounds a bit different.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So, do I have a motion?
Move by Mike Green as the interim custodian of veterans' graves to move that in the future.
Okay. Move by Andrew Goodrich, second by Karen Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only one that didn't say second.
I'll say my, I'll say their PTL. I thought, was that Miss Conley? Yes, sorry. No, Karen, no.
What is it now? Call me Kathy.
Okay, uh, so, uh, moving on to accept the meeting minutes, uh, do I have a motion to line up liaison reports? Uh, oh, I'm not there yet.
You skipped the liaison report.
I'm sorry, going by the, uh.
And there's enough.
I'm on it. Do we have any liaison reports this evening?
So everything in the meeting.
Oh, yeah, good. Yeah, it's just.
I'm not here shopping.
Okay. Reminder, the slow world life, um, thing, uh, event is happening on April twentieth, you can still sign up for that. It's, um, it'll be early Monday thing. And also the bike commission on May seventeenth is working feverishly to focus on the Bike to Work Day. National Bike to Work Day is May seventeenth. And so they're coordinating with a bunch of, they're going to have snacks for people at the, um, train station, or you got bikes, things like that. And are we advising the police that we're going to have in the north, we're going to have bikes on the road roads where they are working with all the departments to go, it's being, you know, very burdensome.
All right, I just have one thing, just because I think it's written that the waterway committee, um, is, had a subcommittee to work on looking at revenue, possible additional revenue, because they realize they're going to have to, um, increase rate to generate more revenue in the near future. Um, and they've been looking at other opportunities besides just, you know, the normal, oh, we have these speeders that are campus, what we have. Um, the reason I'm bringing it up, because two of the things that came up, one was parking at Jericho Road. We are the only boat launch ramp in the entire South Shore that does not pay to launch roads. The only one.
But that's, isn't that a statement?
We can pay for parking, so we can have a parking. Every other place pays, you can do a parking. And, um, so they looked at that for trailers and for, um, cars. The reason I'm bringing that up, because it's right close to Jericho, to the Pier Forty Four, um, and all of that. We met with, um, um, M A P C today, um, the Pier Forty Four, and I was talking to one of the women from M A P C, and I said, oh, we don't, we don't care. She asked if we had paid parking, if this, was this talking to pay parking, because that's what other towns do. And I said, no, currently, we don't have, we can even have the boat launch. So I'm just bringing that up, because it's connected to committees. Um, and the other thing they're looking at is some of the, um, some of the, um, what do you call it? On the camp here, the truck to truck sales. Um, so the, um, like lobstermen and commercial fishermen pay to, like, unload the truck to truck, but then there's, um, you know, kind of recreational, spray professional, and they, you know, go out and they're willing and still pay, should be paid also. Um, so that's another opportunity that's been brought up as well. Um, so bringing up this, just because they're trying to do due diligence, looking at everything, and I see, like, can we do this and look at other towns, or what other towns do before we, they're going to have, be inevitable, those rates are going to have to go up there, so they do love. They're not going to go up to the, to any sort of commercial rate, but they need to go off based on what these two, sort of, that downtown. So.
I'm sorry, Susan, which rates, which rates are you talking about, the marina rates?
Some more, yeah, so the, um, marina rates, the current, um, resident marina rates are a hundred and five dollars a trip. And I think the commercial, whether they are three something, three. At the, um, other marinas around.
Okay. Okay, then. Well, just the, I know the committees are so close, and I know there's a lot with Pier Forty Four. It's something that comes to us at some.
Yes, to, so to be back, Susan just said, uh, M A P C was here today, and it was, it was very informative, I think, to them. They, they seem deeply interested in highlighting this project and, um, are, which is very, uh, responsive. You know, we actually talked to a ton of M A P C people about the issue of permitting. Susan had that brought it up, and because they're legislative person who's there, and that, you know, permitting's been a perennial issue, that things get, uh, delayed and delayed and delayed, and then unreasonable, unreasonably at the last minute, various agencies parachute in and make more demands. And it's, 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 it's a real problem. And she, one of the people, they just said that it's obviously not just tour problem. So I think it sort of came to their attention through this meeting, even though it was a bit of an ancillary discussion. So, it was very good, yeah, so.
Hopefully they'll go back, okay, now we have to.
Yes.
Yes. Mitigating the permitting process. All right, anything else? That's good.
Now.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, um, we have a motion, I'll make a motion to accept a minute, please, select board meeting held on March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Second by Karen Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
And to accept and not release the executive thirty minutes for the select board meeting held on March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, it's matter of discuss, are still pending. Second, second by Karen Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And do we have any correspondence, second through?
I didn't.
No, see you neither. Okay, um, with that, I'll take a vote into the chair. And sign documents.
Okay.
Move by Karen Conley, second by Susan Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, goodbye, thank you.